Does Jared speak? Jared speaks, so he needs the mic.
Hello, hello, hello.
Does Jared speak? Jared speaks, so he needs the mic.
Hello, hello, hello. Hello, hello, hello.
Hello?
Yes, I think we're good.
From the other side, hello?
I didn't ask you.
Y'all want me to do Adele?
Leave it to Gregory.
I could be goat boy.
Leave it to Gregory.
Lucy, sound check.
Hello, it's just really tall.
Well, you've got a taller one than the rest of us. You're special Lucy.
Testing.
That's not it.
That's not it.
Hello?
Have you seen the Realtor one?
Goodbye, goodbye, goodbye.
The Realtor one?
From Adele?
Well, it's like a parody?
I'll do the tip for City Council, sound check.
It's hilarious, I will, I'll find it and share it. It's hilarious.
Okay.
Alright, let's roll.
O.C., we're ready now. Are we good? Communications, are we good? Yes, sir.
Are we streaming in 4K?
Me too.
We're ready, are we ready to go?
I'm ready.
Alright, alright.
Adele's in the house.
Everybody, we're ready? Okay. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and start the Thursday, February 18th meeting of the Victoria Planning Commission. And at this time, if you have a cellphone, could you please silence it? Okay, our first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. Woods and a seconded by Ms. Wyatt for approval of the meeting minutes. Do I hear an all aye?
Aye.
Okay, meeting minutes passed. Next on the agenda, citizens' communication. If anybody wishes to address the Planning Commission on something not on the agenda, please do so now. Okay, nobody, nobody? So, our next order of business is development review. Go ahead, Mr. Charles.
Alright, good evening Commissioners. First item on the agenda is approval, or considering of approval of an extension to the recording requirements for a final plat for Tuscan subdivision, section 2A, Phase 2. Tuscan subdivision, section 2A, Phase 2, has proposed plat of 5.10 acres. Subject property is located northwest of the Bridal Ridge and Saddle Brook subdivisions. This, the final plat proposes 20 single-family residential homes. Is revised, the revised preliminary plat was approved for Tuscan subdivision on July 18, 2013, and the final plat was approved by Planning Commission on September 19, 2013. Planning staff recommends approval of an extension for the recording requirements for the final plat for one additional year. And I can answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have any comments? Bruce, Vic?
I was just gonna say I move that we grant the extension.
I don't think we have to have a public hearing on this issue, so it's just... Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Caldwell, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Herrera to approve the one-year extension. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposes, so he got his one-year extension. Next item.
Second item on the agenda is a variance, section 21-82A1, which requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, as well as a final plat approval of Thomas Kenos Jr. Subdivision, number 1, Lot 1, Block 1, pending the variance. This is, the subject property is located at 810 Levis Road. It is a .1146 acre tract of land. The property is being developed into one single-family residential lot. The variance will allow for the owner to waive the minimum 6,000 square foot lot size requirement. The variance would allow the owner to plat the existing lot property with only 4,993 square feet after a 2.2-foot right-of-way dedication. As you know, for subdivision ordinances, they are required to meet the following five criteria. Staff recommends approval of the variance request, as the lot will be unable to be developed without a variance, as existing tract of land, which would require acquisition of additional land, to be in compliance with the minimum requirement to the subdivision ordinance. As well, staff recommends approval of, if, if Planning Commission recommends approval of the variance request described above, staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to City Council approval of the above described variance request. And I can answer any questions you might have.
I'm all for, I mean, I'm on record of being all for getting properties like this off of being just vacant chunks of land onto the tax rolls as a developed property.
Anybody else? Any comments? Okay. Alright, so on this item, we have to have a, yeah, a public hearing. I think we approve the variance first, and then a public hearing, and then final plat approval, right?
Well, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a variance, a public hearing for the variance first. And then you'll make a motion on the variance.
Alright.
And then if that passes, well, depends on how that goes, then you'll do a motion on the final plat.
Okay. So, anybody wishing to address the Planning Commission on the variance request? Okay, nobody? Alright, then, do I have a motion?
I move approval of the variance.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion by Ms. Wyatt, and a second by Mr. Caldwell to approve the variance request. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nobody, okay. So the variance is approved. Next item is the final plat approval. Public hearing? Okay, nobody? So, do we have a motion on the final plat approval?
I move that we approve the final plat.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion by Mr. Caldwell, and a second by Mr. Spears to approve the final plat. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, final plat approved. Next order of business.
Next and last item on the agenda is a variance, section 20-82B2 and 20-83A of the city code, which states a maximum of two driveways are allowed when a land used has between 200 and 500 feet of frontage. It requires driveways on arterial streets to be located at least 100 feet from a collector. The subject property is located at 6,007 North Main, and has long been developed as a shopping center with a gas station. The owner has applied for a variance to allow the existing driveway to remain. With approval of the variance, site plan approval cannot, the site plan approval cannot be obtained without modifications of the existing driveways to meet current standards. The property owner has also paved additional parking onsite without prior site plan approval as required by code. Additionally, permits cannot be issued while the site is not in compliance with the development regulations, and the tenant is wishing to proceed with interior remodel plans. For these reasons, the property owner is seeking the driveway variance, section 20-82B2 and 20-83A to allow the two driveways on North Main Street to remain. The applicant also believes that if they were to close or reduce their driveways down into compliance, they would lose maneuverability around the existing gas canopy. For this reason, staff has proposed to allow him to maintain some of the concrete that is currently in the right-of-way for maneuverability, but the applicant would still be required to close one driveway. And you can see the visual on the screen. Staff is recommending denial of the driveway variance request, as staff does not believe that the multiple in a large driveway are necessary to sufficiently service the lot. The lot is also, also has two existing driveways on Conti Lane, which is a thoroughfare with easy access due to its signalized intersection with Main Street. And for reference, all the driveways on Conti Street are in compliance and are allowed by code.
Well, I'd just like to say I live out there, and that is a horrible intersection. I can't tell you how many close accidents you see of someone coming out of that, what I would call the left driveway, that's closest to the light. I mean, you have cars coming out, you have cars turning in there. It's pretty crazy. I mean, I must admit, I always wondered why that was ever allowed, and I found the answer tonight, since it was platted before they were in the city limits. Because it really is a bad intersection.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Charles?
Oh, I have a bunch.
Okay, well, now's the time to ask.
Okay, what, what area did they pave that they weren't?
See where the red line is? Everything in front of that.
So, in the little back section that's brown on this, but that is actually all paved.
Here's the property line.
That was extra parking for Las Palmas, right?
You want to bring it up, Jared? You brought this up in one of our previous meetings.
Yeah, we, you know, that area, you can see, first to make sure, answer your question. You see the pavement difference line there, you can see where the concrete ends, and then it becomes, on this photo, it's gravel, it's the darker shade.
Right.
Towards the bottom left corner of the picture.
That area has been paved, was a code enforcement issue in that there were all these cars parking back here for quite some time. It took us a while to, to attempt to get the property owner to bring that area into compliance, either to stop parking back there or to pave it.
That's, that's the same area that we didn't have a problem with them using as a lay-down yard when they were doing construction across the street.
Right.
Right? That's that same area?
That's the same area. So they, he had, apparently had that paving contractor, once he finished using that as a lay-down yard, to go back in there and pave it. He didn't do a site plan, that large of an additional parking lot triggers a site plan, which triggers compliance of the driveways, and, you know, bringing the site up into modern standards. As, you know, we said in the staff report, this is from 1983, even before it was in the city limits. So, that, the pavement of that triggered the site plan, but they paved it without a site plan to try to resolve the code enforcement issue. So, it resolved that part of it, but it never did complete everything else. And so, now we're holding up building permits in order to try to get everything on the site in compliance.
And why now, when Las Palmas has gone through two renovations prior to this, where they've expanded their restaurant over the years? Why are we just now choosing to enforce this?
This is the first time that the parking, that parking lot was paved and a site plan was triggered. Just expanding and taking a wall down in an existing shopping center doesn't normally trigger.
Okay, but it, my understanding of reading the information is that that's what's actually triggering...
Now, that's what's happening, but we didn't have this parking issue then, when those other...
But we still had the driveways back then.
Right.
So we let it go twice before, but now we're...
The paving of the back parking lot is what triggers the site plan and the driveway compliance. Not taking a wall down and expanding into an existing shopping center space. It's the building permit that we've got them hooked on now, that's one of our hammers to try to get this resolved.
So, we're attempting to bring the back parking lot and the driveway into compliance? Or just the driveway issue?
The driveway issue is the remaining issue that would need to be resolved as part of the site plan.
Back parking lot part, that's been taken care of, we're happy with what was...
I want to ask a stupid question, why is it not grandfathered?
It's, it was an unpaved lot.
No, I'm talking about the front.
It's because the site plan requires you, when you expand your parking lot by more than 25% by city code, it triggers the requirement of a site plan. The site plan says, rules say, you're gonna bring it into conformance with landscaping, parking, all those sort of driveways. So, it's the site plan that's triggering the conform, it's how we get these old sites that are grandfathered to eventually come into compliance.
Also comply with the landscaping and everything once they're done?
Yes.
I just wanted to make clear what was triggering this not to be grandfathered.
Right, it's the, the pavement of that existing parking lot triggers the site plan, which triggers the dri, it's a little bit of a domino effect that's happening. And apparently, we're down to this one issue with the driveway, not conforming. And as Ms. Wyatt pointed out, you know, it's one of the reasons why the driveway ordinance was written the way it is.
Compliance at this point is basically just cost of busting out concrete, which is one of the issues, or one of the reasons why.
What did you say, Bruce?
I said to comply with it, it's just a matter of cost at this point, busting out concrete.
Yeah, busting out the concrete.
That's why that's the variance, but it's solely based on the cost of busting out the concrete. Yeah?
Well, I suppose that's for the applicant to tell you.
He wants, he wants to keep the two driveways.
He wants to keep the two driveways, I think.
Well, I think there's more than just the cost, though, because, and, and I agree with Ms. Wyatt, this is a horrible intersection. I've driven this, I've driven this intersection four times a day, every day, for the last four years. Because I got two kids, I've actually, I've had three kids at the high school, in the junior high up there, and driving them back and forth, and I see it all times of the day. My one big concern about having them go from what's currently there down to a driveway kind of located generally where your diagram indicates it with the green lines, is that in the morning, this gas station has a very large number of trailer vehicles. Landscape crews come in here and they stop in the morning. Every morning, there's at least six or more at any one time, filling up for the day. That's 50 mile an hour speed limit along that stretch of the road. And I'm, I'm concerned that if we, right now, those trailers and those vehicles have an ability to get in, come through, come in front of the building, and come out the other side. If we go down to one, I think, I'm concerned that it's gonna create a little bit of a log jam right there. Plus, I'm not sure that we're gonna provide enough room for a trailer vehicle to come in and make the turn to be able to get over to those left pumps. And that's gonna create a log jam at that entrance on a stretch of road that's 50 miles an hour that people typically do 55 or 60 on, especially in the morning.
The one question I have that sort of relates to that, and I had when I was reading it, is just, do we know how many feet they're actually losing? Because it may not be as much as we think, since we're sort of, I mean, how many feet of driveway? Is it significant or not?
You mean in terms of how much curb would be closed up, or...
Because that look, to me, it looks wider.
And this is just representational, where we felt like this is probably the least costly option. The driveway can be actually dropped further south, further down on the picture, into some of that green area. That would provide more clearance.
Can it only be as wide as one of the existing? Or can it be wider than one of the existing? Because, I mean, maybe that solves some of the...
It can be what, 30, 30 feet wide?
I believe when drawing this diagram, that was to the maximum width that it could be.
Do we know how wide the ones that are there are?
I don't know the ones that are there. I know four where it, where it was, it was only 18 feet from that intersection, and it has to be a minimum of 100, so they're losing.
But I'm just saying, if they go into the math, it may not actually lose that much. I mean, really.
I guess I would, I would reference the speedy stop by Academy, that has a compliant driveway, correct?
Sure, yes.
And it's right there, one of the busiest intersections in town, and people manage it quite well.
Right. That's kind of, that's what I'm thinking. If you built it to match, you may still, maneuverability may not be an issue.
This one should not pose any more problems.
I don't believe we'll have any issues. The other thing is, if those trucks or landscaping companies need to come down Conti and, and come in there and come into the back and go out a different direction, they can...
Or go out, or go outside.
Or go out, that way, they have some options.
That lends itself to the second issue, and that's that that restaurant is packed every morning.
Well, they can't at night, too.
It's hard to come through, and it's already congested enough, now we're gonna be adding traffic to it. That, that was a concern for me to have, and I thought about that, having them come down and come down Conti and come back the backside.
I honestly don't...
Just like moving the driveway down further south. The problem is, you've got a bakery right there on the corner of that building that has a drive-through lane right there, as well as the restaurant has a drive-through lane for pickup, and so, that little lane, you can't hardly see much of it in this picture. But that little lane on the, the back end of the, the building right there has a fair amount of traffic during the day.
But see, I think them expanding the driveway some into that green area, that helps that issue. Because that, again, is a horrendous issue if you're going to the bakery, or if you're coming around. I mean, it's just...
Because of that traffic, I mean, getting it back off of the intersection is really a better public safety solution.
Having some congestion onsite, which I don't know that I agree that is gonna create that much more congestion onsite by closing one of the driveways. I think having a little congestion on the site is a far better problem than having all of the conflicts that are happening on the 50 mile an hour street section. It's actually 55 miles an hour there. The 50, the speed limit changes when you get up the curve from Country Creek, from Spring Creek Drive up the hill, and it changes to 55. So the further we can move and separate that driveway from the intersection, the better.
I think there's no question, because, I mean, you see people actually pull out on that left driveway to go left. I mean, they're not going right, they're coming across traffic and going left, and it's just, it's horrible.
I mean, I, I, it is not a good situation, the way it is. But I'm concerned that it's not gonna be a good situation with the alternative either. And that's, that's my...
It's gonna be safer.
Well, but is it?
I think it's gonna be safer, you, you may be right, there may be a little more congestion in the area of the convenience store itself. I think there's no question that traffic safety is gonna be safer for people and, and schools. You're right, kids, you know, you bring your kids to school, I mean...
That's not the only, that's not the only fuel source for people with trailers to get fuel from, in Victoria.
Alright, so now we're gonna penalize a business, a Victoria local business. My, my, and with regard to the speedy stop thing, that was, those pumps were built with that plan in place. These pumps were built with this plan in place, and if you start changing the location of where the ingress and egress was planned for, then you, you, you have a different situation than what we have with, with new construction. And that, you know, if we move that driveway further down south, those pumps on the other end, I think it's gonna be really difficult for anybody to get to it with a trailer.
You have other questions, Vic?
Uh, no.
Comments?
I think that my questions got answered in the discussion.
Anybody else have anything else for Mr. Charles? Okay, well then, we'll open it up for citizens' comments. I see a gentleman back there. Will you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Barney Newell, I live at number 3 Tonto Circle, and I'm speaking for the neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
Grant, granting these variances is very useful in the development of the older parts of, of the city. It would not be useful in this location. We hope you do not grant this variance. This location's on a major thoroughfare and a growth corridor, and it would allow the continuation of a bad situation that's there now, and set a bad precedent for future development. When the state put the light at the corner of Main and Conti Lane, they installed raised curbs for southbound traffic on Main that wanted to turn left on Nursery. Okay, so that, that side of the intersection was done the right way. They did not install them on the northbound traffic wanting to turn left onto Conti. They should have. I don't know if the city is allowed to mess with state highways, but anyway, that's the situation as it stands now. Drivers who want to turn left onto Conti are forced to wait in line behind the traffic trying to turn into the gas station. There's no way around the gas station customers, because they pull all the way to the end of the corner before they turn in. This as proposed with the green lines is not the best situation, but it improves situation. It improves the situation by closing the driveway that's the closest one to the corner. It still allows left turns to go on there. What should have been done is, it should have been a left-turn lane put there, similar to the one at Wells Fargo Bank on North Navarro, where they can turn in there, and then the continuation lane goes on down. When Las Palmas opened, they had two lease spaces in this shopping center. They now have four lease spaces in that shopping center. They work hard, they deserve their success. But the facts are that without major remodeling of this shopping center, they have flat outgrown their ability to operate legally at this location. And they should probably find someplace bigger. And if they move to another location that's bigger, I'll go there and eat there, like I eat where they are now. I don't have anything against the restaurant, there, this place is just not set up for that operation. There's no dedicated queuing lane for the drive-up window. The drive-up window is shared by the donut shop. This causes traffic to back up in Conti Lane, with people trying to turn left into the restaurant, and people trying to turn out of the restaurant and the gas station. So, traffic on Conti Lane westbound and traffic on Conti Lane eastbound are both sitting there waiting for people in the queuing lane. I doubt that the overflow parking area has ever been subject to a site plan review, because it doesn't meet any of the criteria for striping or landscaping. And it's a constant nuisance of blowing dirt and trash coming into our neighborhood off of that lot. You can check with the code enforcement about how many times that vacant lot behind there that's on the west end of the property has been mowed. It's only mowed whenever we call them, whenever it gets up about waist-high or shoulder-high. And it's a home for skunks, armadillos, and possums. I don't believe in zoning, but I do believe in being a good neighbor. The owner of this property is the out-of-town owner, and over the years, he's shown nothing but contempt for his neighbors. If Victoria's gonna have these building ordinances, they need to be enforced equally. And speaking for all the people in the neighborhood, we hope that the commission will deny this request for a variance, and that the city will do everything possible to bring this site into full compliance. And I love Las Palmas, I eat there all the time, but it just doesn't work at that location the way it's set up right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newell.
I have a question. So it says here...
Amongst ourselves?
No, a question to Charles.
Mr. Charles, okay, please go ahead.
It indicates here that, that additional permits cannot be issued while the site is in compliance with development, and tenant wishes to proceed with interior remodel plans. Is the remodel plans to the Las Palmas or to the gas station?
Las Palmas, is my understanding.
That's what it says in their variance request.
Yeah, it does, in the letter. We want to remodel Las Palmas at 6,007 North Main. To get the permit, he asked to change his driveway.
On the variance application, Omar.
In the letter.
Alright. Anybody else have any more questions of Mr. Charles?
I do. If, if we don't grant the variance, they can't get any future permits to do any renovations.
Until a site plan is filed.
Which is gonna require...
Submit a site plan, and we're gonna go through the, the whole process again, okay? And if they choose not to do any future renovations, and just live with what they have, we really don't have anything else we can do to try to get them to come in.
We still have site issues that will need to be dealt with through municipal court.
Jared, isn't there a legal proceeding against our owner right now?
Ah...
Mr. Charles, the response?
No, there's not.
Okay, I misunderstood.
The initial case was, was resolved, had already paid the fine or something.
He paid the fine, and we dropped the initial case, but we could still continue to file additional charges because the site plan approval was not obtained prior to him...
Doing the parking lot.
Paving, paving the parking lot, so it's still definitely an outstanding issue. And even with an aisle of this variance, it will continue to be an outstanding issue until the property owner chooses to get that parking lot approved through the site planning process, which will require some modifications such as landscaping, striping, things like that.
Thank you. Anybody else have any more comments? Okay, about comments within the Planning Commission ourselves, anybody? Wish to say anything? No? Okay, well, we have a variance request, a motion.
Make a motion to deny the variance.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Woods to deny the variance request, a second by Ms. Wyatt. All those, how would I say that, opposed to the variance request, say aye. Anybody, what?
Aye.
So you agree with the variance request?
I believe we should grant the variance.
Okay. I think I said that wrong. Okay, so...
Can you start over again? Because I'm confused.
Yes, 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 yes. Sorry. Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Woods, and a second by Ms. Wyatt to deny the variance request. All those in favor of denying the variance request, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to denying the variance request, say nay. Aye. So we all agree, except Mr. Caldwell, to deny the variance request, so...
And for the record, it's because I don't think it's gonna fix anything. I think we're still gonna have a problem.
The variance request is denied. Next order of business?
Um, next order of business is the monthly development report. In January, we received five minor plats, as well as one major plat for Thomas Kano subdivision. Additionally, we received two site plans, one for McDonald's, uh, for a side-by-side drive-through, as well as, um, Springwood Medical Park. Two policies went to council this month for the DeGonzales subdivision number one variance and the original town site re-sub number seventy-nine. Both as of last, of this Tuesday, were both approved. Additionally, for this month, we, or for, um, this year so far, we have had thirteen residential, single-family, um, and that's up from four this time last year. As well, we have collected forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars of permit fees, um, which is up from forty thousand this time last year. If you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, great. All right, any communication from the? Go ahead and make the announcement on our next meeting, or?
Sure, uh, just, you know, Julie's been communicating with you already, we have, uh, we'll be meeting again this time, uh, next week to, uh, as a special meeting specifically to discuss and, uh, seek a recommendation from you on the Plan Twenty Thirty-five, the city's cumbersome plan, um, so hopefully, uh, if you haven't had a chance to start, uh, going through that, uh, appreciate if you would do that. It'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions, uh, if there are changes or something like that, that, uh, you'd like to make, that's an opportunity to do that. Otherwise, we'll be seeking a recommendation from you that would be forwarded on to city council. And the plan is that it would go to city council, I believe, the first time they would see that would be March fifteenth. And then, um, for a first public hearing, and then I think, uh, what is it, April fifth is the next one. Uh, and hopefully getting adoption from council at that point, so, then we'll get into budget and implementation and.
Jared, so, so that action at that special meeting, I mean, all that we're required to do is provide a recommendation?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so, uh, and of course, if you have changes or whatnot, you want to add anything?
Um, yes, we also have updated the files on the website, and the implementation chapter, if you remember, was, um, incomplete at our last joint meeting, so the implementation chapter has been fully completed, and there's a table or chart that, and it's kind of an easy reference. So, if you, it's still the same link that you would follow, and I'll send that back out, um, tomorrow if you need, but it has been updated.
The implementation chapter of which, where we're at, in the future city introduction?
Future city.
As of when?
Um, two, three days ago.
Probably ten minutes after I printed it back. Okay.
Bruce reprint.
Just those pages.
And once the entire document has been, um, approved, we will, um, give you professionally printed copies for us to reference as we start the actual.
Yeah, the city council had them the other night, and we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't.
I'm a left out. Black and white.
I would highly recommend everyone take the time to read it. There's some interesting things in there that you may or may not want to question at this point, I'm just saying.
Well, I understand Gary will be here, Mr. Mitchell will be here, so.
That'll be good.
It'd be a good time if you have some questions or what have you. All right, does, uh, are there any items from planning commissioners? Anybody? Nothing? All right.
Move to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Woods, how about a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Caldwell to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're adjourned. You know? These are, maybe so. I didn't go to Ms. Foster's office to sign anything.
I don't know how it works, but it looks impressive, it's all get out. Kind of like you, I don't know how it really works, but it looks impressive, it's all get out. I said, I don't know how it works, but it looks impressive, it's all get out, I said, kind of like Greg, I don't know how well it works, but he looks impressive.
Well, I signed last week.
You already signed it?
I have, because I, I never got to Ms. Foster's office.
Really shocked when people would talk when they were out.
I told you about the underpass, I know you've been so busy. At least it was there a few days ago.
One more rent, underneath the one more rent, yeah, okay, I will mention it again.